Call the meeting order and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the absence of a supervisor and a clerk tonight, first we'll take nominations for acting supervisor.
I nominate you.
Support. Any other nomination? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. We're also in the need of a clerk.
I nominate Treasurer Rice.
Support.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, roll call please.
Alright, so Supervisor Milky and Clerk Cody are excused. Treasurer Rice is here. Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Or I should say Acting Supervisor. Trustee Thering.
Here.
Alright.
Okay, next up, we have the approval agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with one change, to remove new business item B.
Support.
Which item B is to consider approving at will Department Director's agreement as to form. So just so the public is aware of that.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Uh, first up, we have a presentation from the Mid Michigan Aquatic Recreation Authority by Lisa Diaz.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having me. Um, my name is Lisa Diaz Sidesmon, and yes, I am on the Mid Michigan Aquatics Recreation Authority. Um, but I want to start with thank you to you all because the, and the Mid Michigan Recreation Authority would not exist if you all would not have partnered with the city of Mount Pleasant and the Mount Pleasant Public School District. So that was a huge catalyst to get us started and begin this process. So today, I'm just going to kind of give you an update and overview of where we are. Um, and as you know, that this is going to be on the ballot as a bond proposal in, at the February 27th election. So, um, let me give you a quick update on where we are, where things stand. So quickly, key accomplishments, we started this effort in August of 2018. I have no idea how we've stuck with this, but that is when it started. It started because of the closure of Rose Pool. That was really the catalyst that started it. It was a group of community members that came together and we called ourselves the Swim Friends of Mid Michigan. And we started talking about, okay, with the, with the Rose Pool closing, um, I had a couple of kids that were doing Pacers at the time. They have long gone and off doing their own thing now, but we, we didn't have the Pacers, we weren't going to have the Pacers program anymore. And there were a lot of other elements that were going to get closed because there is no indoor deep water now in our community because of the closure of Rose Pool. So we started this effort in 2018. In 2020, Union Township, the city of Mount Pleasant and the Mount Pleasant School Board came together and formed the MMARA, which is the Recreation Authority that now is under law its own entity and solely focused and solely established for the Aquatic Center. Um, Mark was very helpful with Nancy Ridley at the time and Jen Verliger at the school district to help set up the authority and give it the foundation that really became what we've been able to build on since. Um, 2021, the board was appointed. You all appointed two people to the board. Um, Allison Cudini was one of them. Thank you. That was a great appointment because Allison is an architect and a project manager for Hilton Hotels and has had an unbelievable amount of experience in construction and design and implementation. Um, the other person that you appointed was Stan Shingles. Uh, again, great appointment. Uh, Stan has managed two pools at the university and the recreation department at the university. So has an extensive background in understanding recreation, finance, and aquatics, which you do not find that in a community that doesn't have a community pool. So thank you very much for those two appointments. It's been great. Um, and then in November 2022, um, we redid the feasibility study specifically on the financials. So we did a feasibility study starting in 2018, working with a consultant. We redid the feasibility study to update all the financials and all the projections and modeling. So that's just a little historical overview. So I want to show you again the design of the Aquatic Center. Now, the Aquatic Center was designed specifically on a couple of things. One, it met the demand of the community. And when I say met the demand of the community, as we studied the community in our feasibility study, we not only talked to so many different groups, our consultant group did, but we also got letters of intent. So groups that said, yes, we are going to use it. Here's how we're going to use it. Everything from fire and rescue to learn to swim, to CMU and all their programs, to the seniors programs. I mean, we have a number of different groups. Now, the idea behind this pool design was, we want to meet the demand, but we want it to be sustainable. And that landed us on this design. We didn't look at just one design, we looked at multiple designs. So for this design, you can see where it says 25, 25 yard eight lane pool. That would be what I would call the main pool. This is called a 25 yard stretch pool because you see that red line running down there between that blue area? That's a removable bulkhead or a movable bulkhead. So on the right side of that is the eight lane 25 yards. And then on the other side of that is another four lanes going the opposite direction. Okay, so that's what's called the stretch. The reason why is you have many different user groups that can use this facility at the same time, right? So you can have the swim team using six lanes of it, you still have two lanes for the community and you got another lane for some other purpose. Or the four lanes on the other side, you may have some walking lanes over there, or you may have some swim lessons going on. Now then the other body of water, because there's two bodies of water to this aquatic center, that light gray area where you see that bean shape, this is a warmer water body of water. So this will be a pool temperature between 87 and 88 degrees. It's meant for teaching, it's meant for therapy, and it's meant for that, that bean shape is called a therapy channel. So it has the ability to turn the water flow up and down. So again, used for rehab or fitness in general, um, when you're not able to potentially do the treadmill anymore, right? And so the, the idea behind this design of this facility was for the purpose of having multiple user groups being able to use it because this aquatic center is that. It's multi-generational and multiple different types of user groups. So, um, the core is though, it's sustainable because of the model, because we can have different user groups at other times. The other things that you'll see on here is you're going to see stadium seating. This is a facility that is set up to have special events and we'll talk about that in a little while. Any questions on the facility? Okay, um, so programs for everybody, um, there's going to be group and private swim lessons from ages from baby to adults. So the whole gamut of swim lessons, water safety, lifeguard programs, senior fitness, aquatics, therapy and rehab. We have a lot of physical therapists and doctors that have supported this initiative and talk about the importance of it for the health of our community. Um, everything from open lab swim, master swimming competitions, PE, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute, about local schools and learn to swim, scuba kayaking paddling, there's everything. So I'm going to share a couple of slides here with you. Learn to swim, this is one of the things that the MMARA is very committed to. We think that, um, the nu, I don't know, the number of students that, or children that have access to learn to swim in this community is very small. Very small. Um, one of the number one goals of the MMARA, once we have the facility, is that we want to do a learn to swim program with every third grader in our community. And the reason why is that if we, and we're modeling this after other community aquatic centers, but the reason why is if we can get them exposure and if we can get them to learn the basics of swimming, A, oftentimes it'll, it'll spur that lifelong love for this sport that you could, or this, this physical activity that you could do for a lifetime, and B, it's a safety factor, it's a health factor. We, we need more kids to have this basic skill, and so we are committed to that. In addition to wanting to do the third grade learn to swim, in the operational budget, we have scholarship dollars available. We want every family that, that wants access to learn to swim to get access to learn to swim. Um, recreation, there are just unbelievable amounts of different ways that we can do recreation using the Aquatic Center. Um, everything from a movie night to scuba night to paddle boarding, every, there's so many opportunities um, that this is going to allow us to bring to this community to again, engage families, engage our community in more services. Aquatic fitness, um, again, there is just a tremendous amount of opportunities for aquatic fitness. Um, we, uh, we have a group of seniors that do a little of this aquatic fitness at the SAC, limited on time because the SAC just does not have enough time to service all the folks that need and want access to water. Um, the other thing is that this has the ability to have some deep water fitness. We have no deep water in this community, and so this will have that opportunity as well. Um, therapy and rehab, again, this is an area that we have heard over and over and over. Many physical therapists have talked to us, the hospitals have talked to us about, how can we use this for physical therapy? Special Olympics is one of those groups that is, that is, uh, put a letter of intent, yes, we want to have access and want to be able to use it. So lots of opportunities for that. And the warm water, and both, both pools will have access, um, with a ramp entry and both will have lift entries. So the idea is that everybody that has a need or a want will have access to use it. Um, competitive aquatics, as I told you, Pacers was the local swim team. When it, when it sunset because of no place to practice, they had 150 kids in Pacers at the time. Um, so we know there is a need and there's a want, um, there is just nowhere to have this right now. And so this has the opportunity to do that. The other thing is the high school girls swim team, they can't even, they have to go to ELMA to practice and to have opportunity to compete. There's nothing here that has that opportunity for those programs. And we haven't even touched the surface of what competitive programs we can have here in having a facility like this. Um, I'd like to share this slide because every quarter has a slide like this. And this slide is showing you what will be used in all the different elements of the Aquatic Center. So what I like to show here is the yellow and I think it's the purp, no, the yellow and the light gray are all open swims. So the thing about the Aquatic Center is, and why the model works is every hour that the kid, that the pool is open, the Aquatic Center is open, there's a place for the community to come in. If you're a member or you're a drop-in, every hour that the facility is open, there's a place for the community to come in. Right now, if you're a swimmer or you want to have access to the pool, you're going at 6:00 AM. If you're a family, you might be going on Saturday at 1:25, right? There is not a lot of options because the university is not set up, that facility, that pool is not set up to be a community center. It's set up to be something that can serve their students. And so this is going to have the opportunity, whatever, whatever time it is, you don't have to go only at 5:30 AM in the morning. Location, I get this question all the time. So here is the location of the Aquatic Center. This is a partnership with the school district. This is school district property that they are giving to the rec authority because we are, you know, tax entity to a tax entity. So for a dollar, they're, they're selling us this property. And the property is located at Preston and Isabella, towards, you'll see where Sweeney ends. If you think about where the high school soccer fields are right now, if you can picture that, it's directly across Preston from the high school soccer fields. You don't really realize how much property is back there, but there is a lot of land back there. You just don't see it necessarily when you drive by. That is where the facility will be located, okay? Um, this is, uh, Union Township, even though it's, you know, structured around the city, but it, this piece of property is Union Township property. Okay? Alright, so here's what's, here's what's happening. We believe, we, we believe, we know that right now, $20.25, this, this facility is going to cost $23.5 million to build. $23.5 million to build. Um, obviously, lots has changed, um, things keep fluctuating day to day, interest rates come up, go down. Uh, building costs have adjusted, but the latest this has been, uh, dollars that this is going after is a pool that just was completed here in Michigan. Um, and so we've re, even redone the dollars again based on their building costs. So what we're asking taxpayers to consider is not to exceed 25 million and not to exceed 25 years on the ballot initiative that is coming in February. So what that yields is, basically, if your home has a tax value of about $150,000, it's approximately what we say a cup of coffee a week, uh, sorry, a cup of coffee a month. So when I say a $6 cup of coffee, I've ne, I don't buy $6 cups of coffee, so it'd be, you know, less than a cup of coffee a month. So it's about $75 a year for, for a homeowner in that, generally in that range. So that will be the expense that will be coming towards the homeowner. And this is levied by the MMARA. So it is not, obviously, through Union Township, the city, the school district, this is an MMARA, uh, tax levy that we're asking just to support the facility construction, not operational. This is not an operational bond, this is only for the facility. Okay. Uh, so I want to talk about the operational sustainability. Because I told you when we started, we talked to our consultants and we said, listen, please prove to us that we are wrong and this is not sustainable, because in 2018, we could have walked away from this. And we could have been like, saved a lot of time and energy. But that's not what they came back and told us. They said, if you build the right type of aquatic center, you have the demand to sustain it. And so I want to talk to you a little bit about our sustainability. Now, this is a snapshot, we have tons of modeling that has gone into this, financial modeling. We have Excel sheets that back up every element of how these projections were made. But what this is showing you is in year zero, which is the before opening, so before we finish the construction on it, the expenses in year zero, um, are going to be about $139,717. Now that is primarily staffing and some consulting fees and things like that and startup. On the, on the revenue side, you can see it's very low in those first years. There's some sponsorship things and then there's some early registration on membership. Now, in that, in that year one, you're also going to see where we land. We're, we're still, we're still not breaking even yet, but then by year three, we are starting to make a profit. Now, here's what I will tell you about our revenue. Revenue was built very, very conservatively, very conservatively. We said, do not inflate, we do not want to inflate these, we want to know where the data is coming from. So when we set our membership rates, we looked at area, um, we looked at area, uh, uh, organizations like the SAC and like Maury Courts and like, uh, a couple of the other workout facilities. We also looked at regional aquatic centers. So we looked at both in order to determine what is a membership rate that is feasible for our community and yet, and then also budgeted how many people we expected. And so we looked at couples, we've looked at families, and so we have it all broken down. Same with what you're going to charge for swim lessons and how many people would come. We use the data, we didn't just guess at this, we use data to drive all of these. But we use very conservative revenue estimates. The idea was we did not want to inflate these because the, we do not, we, the whole goal of this is that it is sustainable in the end. On the other side, however, on the expense side, we were very liberal. We said, don't give us something that says, oh, we'll, we'll get this for less. Like, no, that's not how we want to operate. We want to be very strategically sound here in these estimates. And so on the expense side, we were fairly liberal in how we estimated expenses. We didn't assume any cost savings on things like that. So you'll see in those first few years, we, we do not break even. So we do have an initial startup fund, we need to raise $300,000, of which we've already got $100,000 commitment. So I'm not, we're not worried about that initial startup funds, but after that, it is a sustainable model. And I'm going to talk to you about, even in this budget, is I told you, um, or I didn't tell you this yet, but I'm going to tell you, we have, we have some scholarship dollars, we have capital, long-term capital dollars in here. We have rainy day dollars in here, so I'll show you that in a minute. But this is, this is not, this is a model that is set up to be a healthy financial model in the end. Okay, I talked to, I just mentioned this about the long-term capital reserve. So our goal, what they say is that an aquatic facility is a 50-year facility. Now, this was pre, previous to the improvement of air quality and water quality. Technology has led to aquatic centers lasting longer now because the air and the water quality is better, is what, is the assumption now, right? Um, so, but we know that around year 20, um, the smaller, uh, teaching pool is going to need new tile. Let's just say that. So we're, we need to be prepared that by year 20, we've got a nice pot of money to keep maintaining the facility. Because the worst thing is we build it and we aren't able to maintain it. And then it, it erodes and it doesn't become something that the community can use and be proud of. And so we built this into the budget. Now, in the budget is maintenance, like for, like the shower breaks and we need to fix the shower or we need to redo the hallway here, that money is in the budget as just a line item in the budget. This is extra, this is long-term capital reserve dollars. And this is what we build in the budget, starting to build in year four and onward to get to, we're at one, we're at 2.6 million, but that number will change depending on where we are with our budget. But we're, our goal is 3 million by year 20. Same thing on the, um, annual operating cash, or what I like to call your rainy day fund. Nobody anticipated COVID was coming, right? And, and rec facilities just got killed in this, they got killed in it. And so to be a sound organization and entity, we thought, we have to have some reserve funds. And what I see, I work with nonprofits a lot, and what I see nonprofits do is they, whatever's left at the end of the year, we'll just throw into our rainy day fund. I don't think that's good strategy. And so in our budget, we have built in there this amount of money that is consistently going to be, start going into the rainy day fund and start to grow. So that by year 15, we have a 39% of that annual total expense. And that's our goal, that we want to build that up so something happens that we didn't prepare for, that we couldn't predict, that we're not out, we're not sitting there going, we don't have the cash reserve to sustain and to support us. So we built that into the budget, not saying, oh, whatever's left, we'll, we'll save for that. Um, okay, so now I want to talk about the economic impact. So initially, the expectation is that we're going to have 50 to 60, um, construction jobs over the first 15 to 18 months. The commitment the MMARA has made as a board is that we want as many of these jobs to go local. As many as we can, we want to go to local contractors. Now, with that, I will tell you, we've already, um, gone through a bid process and hired, uh, an architect. Well, there's no aquatic architect in the Mount Pleasant community, but we've hired an architect in Grand Rapids. And we've also articulated this to them, that we want to use as many local contractors as we possibly can for that. Uh, initially, we're talking about three full-time jobs and then 70 to 100 part-time employees. These are everything from, uh, lifeguards to swim instructors, um, and other programmatic pieces in between. So we're looking at in the first five years of operation, between 4 and 4.5 million in the operational staff alone. Not the construction staff, just the operational staff. So that will be contributing jobs to the community. Um, some people have asked me, well, how are we going to find lifeguards? Well, that's another thing we're talking to the high school about is, how do we create? I, I got my lifeguard certification in high school. Let's create a class at the high school and let's start training them right away where they're getting, uh, the, the PE requirement and now they have a job, they can go and they can walk there. I mean, this is so close to the high school, they can walk there. So we're talking about programs like that to help create, again, that sustainability of, uh, the, even the staffing that we're going to need long-term. Uh, the, the last section here is on, uh, sports tourism. So as I told you, this facility is built to hold special events. There is no facility anywhere close to what we are talking about building anywhere in Mid Michigan. The closest facility that could host something like we're talking about is Saginaw Valley. And that facility is aging and is, is not becoming the popular place to be. There is nothing in Midland, there is nothing in, even Lansing doesn't have anything at, at this level. And the thing that I like to say, I know Claire always says they're the gateway, right? Isn't that their theme, they're the gateway, or I think we're the gateway, but we're, what we've heard and what we continue to hear is, we will be a, just a prime place, just like Maury Courts is, to bring people from the east, from the west, from the north, from the south, to meet in the middle and be able to hold events. So the consultants have done some, yeah, some evaluation and they say, we think at, very conservatively, you can host 20 events a year. What that will yield with people coming into the community for multi-day events is that we're looking at about $1.3 million of, of, um, annual direct spending. So this is hotels, this is restaurants, this is going to the store, right? Coming into this community and spending their dollars in this community. So this is, this is not just a recreation, a nice thing for our community, though it is. This is also an economic stimulator for our community, which we think is really important. We think it's something that, as CMU has shrunk, we've heard over and over and over, the challenges in our community, this is something that can help generate some more people coming and spending and hopefully staying in, in our community in some cases. Um, last thing I want to share is key dates. So I told you that this is going on the ballot for February 20, on February 27th. Um, and then the target opening, uh, is spring 2027, that's the target opening. Now, the hope is that that gets accelerated, but we do not, we, we'd, uh, we'd rather be conservative in our estimate. Um, and so that is what we've said, is that spring 2027 being the target of opening the facility for the community. So last thing, I just want to, um, highlight, uh, the board. Um, I mentioned to you the two appointments that you have, which are Allison and Stan. Um, John Zhang is the chair, John was with the city of Mount Pleasant, uh, for many years. Understands, what I always say is, John is our infrastructure underground, understands all that work. Um, I've mentioned Allison myself, I always say I'm the weak leg of the group. Um, I am a consultant, a business owner, um, but you know, our, my role has been, really been just to keep this moving for all these years. Stan, I mentioned him, Mark Stansbury, he is a business owner in our community, he's a physical therapist. And Judy Wegley, uh, works for CMU in public broadcasting, so brings the communication, marketing, messaging piece to it. So. So the one thing I will say between the city, the school district, and Union Township is, you've established a great board and people to be responsible. I can tell you this, through this process, this group has asked some really tough questions and really challenged along the way to ensure that we were doing something that was going to be not just beneficial for the community, but sustainable for our community. I like to say that we are strategic risk takers that use data. And that's really key, because when we take on something like this as a community, I think it's really important that we have done the homework to ensure that we're not setting this community up to take on something that they're gonna fail at. We want to succeed at this. And you've appointed the right board, I think, to ask the right questions, to push in the right direction. And we've been fortunate enough to have township, city, and school district support in this. So they've also been able to help us get to this place that we, where we're at. So that's a lot I've just shared with you. I want to answer any questions you have or any comments that you might want to share.
Well, I mean, harkening back to when I was a little teeny kid and we had that island park pool, I'm looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be great for the kids, and we haven't had anything like this in so many, so many years that just, we really, it's gonna be great.
Yeah, thank you.
I think in the initial draft that was done back in eighteen, there was talk about having different membership fees for in-district and out-of-district. Does that still?
Yep, it still stands. So if you live in district, there is a discount on the membership fees and actually all programmatic fees. So if you are, if you are paying taxes to support this, you will have a discount on your membership and all programmatic fees.
Okay.
But everybody, I've had this question before, can only people that live within the voting district? No, we want people from Claire to come, we want people from Shepherd to come, we want people from all over to come. My parents live in Boyne City and they go to Charlevoix to use the pool because they, you know, they're older, their knees don't do the normal fitness routine anymore. We want people to use this from wherever they are if they have a need.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions from the board?
I'm excited.
Yeah.
I, my first job, other than babysitting, was I actually ran a pool and fitness center. So the fact that, you know, we may be getting a pool here, that it's exciting.
Well, I will say this, it's been done by the community, started with some friends of Mid Michigan. Nobody has ever been paid, actually, we all pay to keep it going, right? So it's been done by the community, it's strictly been a grassroots effort. And now what we're saying to the community is, it's your turn, right? So it's the community's turn to come and say, yes, we want this and we support this, and we're willing to, we're willing to take that cup of coffee dollars and put it towards this. So with that, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Well, thank you very much for being on the board in the presentation tonight. We really appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the public hearing for Michael Engineering, five-six-two-five Venture Way, IFTE request. Manager Steel Dryer?
Thank you. Tonight, we're holding a public hearing only. There's no action being requested of the board in terms of approving or granting the certificate. Michael Engineering has been in the community for a number of years. They've expanded more than once over those years. They're expanding again, and this is out on Venture Way. The IFT, the application is for twelve years by statute. It would be a fifty percent reduction in taxes. And there's a chart on page seven that outlines the estimated savings for the company. The rules of granting these certificates require a number of things, one of which is to hold a public hearing, to receive comment. So tonight, we do have some representatives from Michael Engineering here tonight that I'm sure would like to speak, as well as Mr. McBride from the MMDC. And maybe before, or when you open the public hearing, they'll have an opportunity, I think, to speak to the project from their perspective.
Thank you. With that, we will open up the public hearing at seven-twenty-nine. Anybody wish to speak?
Do you need to identify myself?
Yes, please.
Mr. McBride, President and CEO of Middle Michigan Development Corporation, and very pleased to be here to be supportive of this tax abatement for Michael Engineering. The request would begin, my understanding is in twenty-twenty-five. It would be up to twelve years, that's your decision. We do recommend twelve years, and we typically do recommend that for these types of tax abatements, for the new expansion, whether, no matter where the project is in Isabella or other counties that we serve. Just a little bit about this particular expansion. It's eleven thousand seven hundred and sixty square feet expansion, it was a massive expansion. The cost of it was over one point three million to the company. So it was a big investment. A little bit about them, you know, they tend to be kind of a quiet company, but a company whose customers know who they are and where they are because they do very unique two-part metering systems for industrial production, including the aeronautics industry, using silicones and epoxies and urethanes. So whenever you would ping Michigan, you know, looking for where are the aeronautics locations in Michigan, Michael Engineering always comes up because they do supply the aeronautics industry, as well as many other industries. So, you know, and what they do, not very many other companies do. It's a very unique product and a very unique process. So we're very proud to have them in our area. And this is a homegrown company that grew up here in Isabella County and Union Township. So having said all of that, I would strongly encourage the full twelve years, starting in twenty-twenty-five. And again, it's just on the new, it's not on the whole, you know, project or the entire building, just on the new construction that you would be giving the abatements, you'd be receiving fifty percent of that tax revenue on the new construction over the twelve years instead of a hundred percent. But for the amount of investment they've done and the jobs that they, the people they've employed over the years, I mean, I would strongly recommend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Grateful to be here tonight to have a chance to-
State your name and where you-
Certainly, Eric Pruitt, and I'm from Michael Engineering.
Thank you.
I've been one of the owners. And I got my start in nineteen sixty-five, and the company started in seventy-one. And so I grew up building pumps for Dad in the basement at the corner of Crawford and Deerfield. We took over the company from Dad in two thousand and one and moved to the facility that we're in now. It was smaller at that point in time and had been working and growing there since then. So I've been in the community, Mount Pleasant, this is where I grew up at. And I'm glad to be here and still be part of the community and still growing as a company.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wish to speak?
Acting Supervisor, I do have some online, I'm not sure if they are wanting to speak.
Okay, does anybody online wish to speak on the?
If you raise your hand.
Last call for those online that would like to speak regarding the public hearing?
If you don't know how to raise your hand, you can, right here. So for the computer or tablet, you can go down to the reactions, next, click the raise hand icon. Or if you're on your telephone, press star nine if they don't know. The reaction icon is at the bottom right corner of the screen. Nobody?
Okay. I think, I will then close the public hearing at seven-thirty-four. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is public comment, restricted to three minutes regarding items on this agenda. Is there anybody here that would like to make a public comment? Is there anybody online that wish to make a public comment regarding items on the agenda? Seeing none, I will close public comment. We have no closed session. Reports and board comments, we will not be doing appointments tonight. The two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission Annual Report.
That report is in your packet. The Planning Commission, by rule again, is required annually to report to the Board of Trustees the activities for the prior year. This report begins on page nineteen of your agenda packet. You'll see that the frequency of their meetings, there were no meetings canceled or additional meetings held. There were a number of, up to ten, various types of site plans considered and approved. The Planning Commission is working on the Parks and Recreation Plan update, the Master Plan update. And then there was a few other ad hoc types of activities by the board that are listed under Other Items of Business. I think the, what the Board of Trustees would want to do would be just to acknowledge acceptance of the report. So we have that for the record. And if you have any questions on any of the items in the report, we have Mr. Nanny here that could provide detail on that.
Can we get acknowledgement of the report, a board member? Like a motion or just a knowledge? Just connect the motion?
Yeah, I move to acknowledge the receipt of the Planning Commission twenty-twenty-three Annual Report and acceptance.
So we have a motion and a support. Any questions? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. And is there any questions regarding that? Probably did that wrong, but you know, we'll move forward. So no questions on that, thank you very much.
I, you know, I do, I might have-
Yeah, please.
So have they kind of wrapped up with the survey? Have they gotten their data for the Parks and Rec?
So the township survey, the collection of data is wrapped up. But there'll be more information in the actions back shortly, one of your board packets coming up. The, I was actually talking with Dr. Center just the other day about this and asking about timing of things. So as I said, I'm sure we'll be hearing more shortly on that topic. I think that right now they're compiling the data, putting the analysis together. And we'll see it, I think, if I recall, the timing of the project was the final report in March with all that data put together.
Okay, and then they're gonna pretty quickly wrap up the Parks Master Plan?
Well, that's certainly a big item for the Parks Master Plan. That's a big element of the public input for it, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other further questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to board member reports.
I'm set tonight.
I missed the last meeting, so I just want to reiterate. I did attend the December fifth, twenty-twenty-three Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting. And really just wanted to state that they did announce their new location. It's gonna be at five-ten West Pickard, and they're gonna have a five, I'm sorry, a, it's a twenty-seven thousand square foot facility, but I think they said they're leasing five thousand of the square feet there and they're gonna hold operations here for at least a year while the asbestos is faded. Other than that, just some pretty much routine stuff.
I have nothing.
Just pay your taxes. I know you don't want that reminder. But, um, we do have opportunities available to pay online. So for those that can't get here from snowstorm or whatever, they can go to our website and click on the view and pay bill online and follow the link and enter your address or parcel number, however you want to search for it. You can search by name, address, parcel number, and follow that and look at the tax information, pay it online, and you're good to go, so. Yeah, otherwise, we do have the Dropbox and stuff here too.
Do you accept partial payments?
Oh, and we do, yes, we do accept partial payments. You know, you can pay as many times as you want, as long as it's fully paid by the due date, so.
So I know some municipalities have a problem with tax front counters. So you instituted a monthly payment?
Yeah, and we-
So that people are paying it all at once, in it incrementally? I think like the city of Detroit does that.
Yeah, and you can, you can make as many payments as you want, as long as it's fully paid by February fourteenth. So, or the due date that year, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Therry?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have consent agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Support. I did the accounts payable and everything checked out good. Is there any discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Next up is new business, discussion of late fee request for account zero-four-two-five-one at two-three-six-six Sandstone Drive. Manager Steel Dryer?
There's a report on this request by the account holder that begins on page forty-one of your report, of your agenda packet. There's a request by Ms. Guza to waive the late fee of forty-seven dollars even. There's a lot of emails in your packet. There was a lot of back and forth between the account holder and the billing office, the utility billing office. I think from our perspective, there was a lot of communication being, and information being provided by staff at the township. The property owner, as far back as June, was in contact with the office. They knew a bill would be coming due. Apparently, they didn't get it during the original mailing of the bills, came back to the township. It was put in an envelope and remailed to the account holder. They did receive it about six days before the due date. There's an email from the account holder in your packet that they were a bit surprised by the size of the bill. I'm not sure why that is. They do have an irrigation system, so maybe that was contributing to that. Nonetheless, they acknowledged that they didn't have budgeted funds to pay for the bill at that time. So they were asking, by that time, we accrued penalties on the account. And they had paid the bill, they've paid the penalties, and as is their right, and we facilitated their being able to come to the Board of Trustees with this appeal on that fee. Staff recommendation is that you deny that. We don't feel there's any responsibility on the part of the township to cause this late payment. And there's also considerations such as, I think historically, the board, when presented with these, you rarely get them, but you do, unless there's reasons that can be attributed to the township staff. The policy has been to deny that, and that's the administration's recommendation on this one as well. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Is there any questions for the manager?
Looking, reading the emails, and maybe I missed it, but I didn't, as the property owner was kind of talking about the bill, I didn't see anywhere, and I may have missed it, see anywhere where the township said, oh, you haven't received your bill, but this is what it is. Did, is that, I didn't see that. Did, is that, I didn't see that. Did anybody else see that?
I'm sorry, what was that now?
So as the customer was waiting for the bill and it didn't show, show up, looks like there was some communication.
Yeah.
I didn't see where, not that it's a responsibility of the township, or where the township maybe, did you get, did you see something, Ken?
Um, I'm looking at this one, I'm just reading it to make sure, but I think so, hang on. Good afternoon, I show that we received payment July 14th. Um, it is 56, and it is at the top. The received payment, July 14th, 2023, for the second quarter billing, April 1st, June 30th, 2023, in the amount of $171.36. The third quarter billing for July 1st, September 30th, 2023, will be mailed out September 30th. So I mean, it gave an approximate, but it didn't, it, yeah, it doesn't say for that one, but-
There was, there was emails sent in between there inquiring when the bill was coming. They, they were-
I think trustee Thering, what we have in the agenda packet is the written record. We do not have anything that speaks to the-
Phone calls.
Telephone communication. I cannot speak to your specific question. The individuals that would have been party to that phone call are not at the meeting.
Right.
I will say, I'd be very surprised if that number did not come up during what were multiple forms and multiple-
Emails.
Times of communication, whether it be phone or electronic. Just don't know.
I don't hold the township responsible for the mail not, you know, returning it back.
One, one thing I did notice on here on November 15th, where Jennifer's stating bag, just wanted to follow up with you on the payment options, ACH or Lick Clinken, it gives the actual township email or township website on there, where you can go and look up your bills right there at that point. So I'm assuming that, just wanted to follow up, leads me to believe that I'm, again, it's a phone call and we can't ascertain, but it sounds like there was some communication about-
How to determine-
Some other payment options and how to look it up.
But that's after the fact, right?
Right, but it was, but it was a follow-up. I wonder if, when it was said originally, we don't know.
Well, we don't know, but I can see that this pa, this, not patient, this resident citizen has really reached out a lot and, you know, tried to get clarification a lot. And I, I can't see charging that fee, I think it's ridiculous. I'm sorry, we don't usually waive fees, but in this case, this is just very confusing. And if I was a resident, I would expect a little better customer service too, and I'm sorry. That's the way I feel about it. I don't think that we reached out enough. And, and, you know, it was, the bill didn't get received for over a month.
Well, there, I mean, there is information that we, like the manager said, that conversations that probably happened over the phone, we do not know. So I'm not going to assume that they didn't say it. I'm just saying we don't know whether they actually verbally said over a phone call. But I, I look at it as-
Benefit of the doubt.
I don't know that that happened. The customer got their bill on the 30th or 31st of October and had six days to pay a bill that they weren't prepared for.
Yeah, I mean, I've got six weeks to, my mail come, but this was, she had just moved in, you know, a few months earlier, and, yeah. I don't know, that's where I'm at.
I mean, I, I'm feeling like I do not want to charge the fee as well, only because of the, the information that we don't have. But I don't want to assume that the township didn't do that.
Right, I don't, well, I'm not saying anything about the staff or anything like that. But there's been a lot of communication on this, way more than it seems like there should and that needed to be in writing.
Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, if somebody's ready for a motion, then?
I'm not on the page, sorry.
Sure, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to deny the request to waive the quarterly water and sewer bill penalty for 2366 Sandstone Account Number 04251 in the amount of $47.
So that's a motion to deny, is there any second?
Support.
There's a support?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion on the motion?
I'm gonna vote that down.
I know our staff did their job. I'll put it out there right now. I believe in our staff, I know our staff did their job. We've already set precedence on this on other denials, and that's why I made the motion.
I mean, this isn't a reflection of how we feel about our staff.
No.
So, I mean, please don't, please don't indicate that on my-
There was a comment made, okay? So.
Well, but realize you're speaking for you, not for everybody else.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm speaking because there was a comment I already made about staff, so.
Well, I'm saying that customer service needs to be extended to our residents. And judging from the communication, I think it could have been a little more thorough, based on how confusing it is to me. That's all. I didn't make a statement about the staff.
Okay.
So a yes vote would be to deny, a no vote would be to not.
Correct.
Correct.
So is there any other further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries three to two. Next on the agenda, we have extended public comment. This is restricted to five minutes on any issue. Is there anybody that would like to speak? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Rick Byers, I'm at 1110 Metal Drive in Mount Pleasant, B, the Fox Metal Subdivision. About a year or so ago, I was, I contacted the county. The county maintains our streets, this is about Fox Metal Streets. And about every five years, I asked them to bid for crack sale. And, and of course, we did it again this year, we have, we have for the last 15 years probably. And, and they responded by that. Our streets really aren't in shape, good enough shape now to be cracked. It's time to go to Plan B, you know? Or you can wait and do Plan C, which is tear them apart, but, and so, yeah. So we, anyhow, so we, I worked with, he recommended, I call him Kim Smith, I worked with Kim through the, the streets. And, and Kim's got me set up, me, got our subdivision set up to, to go through the process. And so the informal petition and a lot of discussion, first of all, you know, we have 40, I think we have 42 lot owners, 41 actually lot owners in our, within the streets. We have so other members that are on Crawford Road that do not belong to the interim, are not affected by this. But anyhow, we went through the, and as part of this, we, I was able to contact one of the local bidders, just to get an idea, what's this gonna run? And he gave me a quote of what it would cost roughly, based on 2023, because we didn't plan to do it till '24. And, and so we had that information a little bit, so we had a rough figure. Anyhow, so as we, as I went through and got the informal petition signed, we had, I think, 80% of our, and the reason we didn't get any more than that is because they weren't there, because they all want to know what it's gonna cost, what's the process and whatever. And we did, and we did that, and, and people were very, very supportive. Then I just, then we, Kim was able to go out through the county, county put the bid out, or not the bid, the estimate, engineer's estimate, because it still has to go for bid probably sometime this spring. And it came back in over 25% higher than the original estimates. So, which was kind of a shocker for a lot of people, because it's, you know, inflation might be eight or nine percent, but 25%, that's, that's, that's a, that's a big surprise. So anyhow, we did go through the informal, now we're in the process of where we are, we are doing the formal petition. And the formal petition is being, trying to be circulated now. It doesn't come back as much favorable as the informal, because the informal is just, you know, let's see where this is going. So anyhow, but, and explaining to everyone the process and what it's gonna cost now. And, yeah, you start to get a lot of balking. So, so one of the things I, we would like to do is, is request from the township, just consider maybe sharing some general funds help offset some of these expenses. I'm not asking for a lot, I'm just asking for something, something for you to consider, because we're not asking for it now. This is something you'd, we'd ask, ask you to take, think about, because whatever you do for Fox Metal, you're probably gonna do for everybody in the whole area. But, but if you take a drive, if you drive around some of these other subdivisions, you'll see that some of these subdivisions are in really bad shape. I mean, and there's an incentive that the township can give to some people to, you know, get off the center and fix your streets. It proves your, proves your street, improves your value, your homes, and, you know, improves everything. So at this point, that's, I'll make it simple, we're just, we're looking for you to consider some type of subsidy or of our, of our expenses. Right now, our expenses are, the original estimate was 82,000, would be what they call a milling fill. Mill an inch off and put an inch of a high-density topping on it. And that's, the estimate original was 82,000, the engineer estimate is 1,102,000. So roughly 2,500 plus for property owner. So again, that's just one of the things I'm gonna ask you to just consider, again, for the, for the future, maybe in some of your subcommittee meetings that you have to think about something. And that's, basically, that's all I have, I don't, anybody has any questions?
No, understand.
No.
I appreciate it, Rick.
Pardon?
No.
I understand what you're, what you're saying, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody online that would like extended public comment?
Can you tell them again how to raise their hand, they're on the phone.
Yeah, on the phone, star nine, if you want to raise your hand. Otherwise, in the bottom right-hand corner is the reactions, you can raise your hand there as well. If you're on a device other than the phone.
Okay, seeing as there is no additional extended public comment, we'll move into manager comments.
Uh, we gotta close, 7:57.
Oh, close at 7:57. And now manager comments.
I have none tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Final board member comments, I'll start with trustee Thering.
Uh, none for me, thanks.
Treasure Rice?
Pay your bill, I'm good.
None for me?
I had to get a laugh, I'm sorry.
Trustee Brown?
All set, thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn at 7:58.
Thank you.
Oh, and stay safe, stay safe on the roads, that's the other one.
Do you want a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Was that Brown or Thering? What was that?